Okay. Good evening, everybody. We'll call the Belvidere City Council's regular meeting of May 17th to order. Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Burton.
Here.
Flurry.
Present.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Mahal.
Present.
Porter.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ten present.
Thank you. If you join me for a pledge of allegiance, followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we pray that you bless this meeting tonight. We also ask that you grant us the wisdom, courage, compassion. And we also ask for that you bless our first responders and our military, both men and women and our first responders and our military. We pray to thank you, Lord, for our freedoms, our country, and for this community. And we ask that you will be with us tonight in our meeting. Thank you. Under number three, public comment. Did we have anybody register? We don't have anybody for public comment. So we have item four, the approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of May 3rd, 2021, as presented. Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman Porter. Any discussion, any changes? Hearing none. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. We have no public hearing tonight. Under item six, special messages and proclamations, we have Pam Lopez-Fettis with Growth Dimensions. Hi Pam. Thank you.
Thank you and good evening. I have a rather short report. I wanted to leave more time for questions that you might have. Wanted to share with you some of the enterprise zone activity that we've had. We have 22 new projects that have been involved in the enterprise zone. Nine businesses to date since 2020, I'm sorry, 2021, that plan to invest almost 750,000 in construction material costs and almost 2 million in capital investment in Boone County. The projects that we've been, have added this month have been two new projects that we've been submitting. This includes projects featuring information technology. It's a campaign that Intersect Illinois is having to enhance the number of information technology companies in our, in Illinois. And then the other one is Project Sayonara. I'm sorry, I'm pronouncing this right. Sayonara. And this one is an automotive sector and company that's making a rather large investment. And their project is looking at multiple states. We have submitted about 18 projects, industrial and commercial projects, since January 1st of this year. Two of those projects, which would remain, who wish to remain confidential. One is under contract and the other one is negotiating a contract and may be under contract by next week. So we are looking forward to making some announcements in the upcoming months. One of the, I think, issues that are a lot of people's mind is the automotive industry. So we've been having ongoing conversations with the automotive industry, Stellantis, and the state to get ready for the next project. We wanted to make sure that we're in a good position to grow the automotive industry in Boone County. This, so with the layoffs, because largely is due to the computer chip not being available in the U.S., it's been affecting us ongoing for the past several months. And where they had to make an announcement that over 1,600 people may be affected and lose their positions. Now, we're, I've had several conversations in the last few days and throughout this week in order to try to understand what the causes are, what we can do in order to address that, and how we can help rebound, whether or not it be with the current automotive, I'm sorry, Jeep, or with a new version or new product down the pipeline. So. I'm available for any questions, then?
Any questions for Ms. Fettis?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
So, looking on those lines, are they looking at anything to do with the electric car industry portion and?
Yeah, so basically every vehicle that you're seeing has some type of electrification in it, component in it. And that's why this chip is so important, not only in the automotive industry, as you see, it's across the manufacturing industry. Anything that has these type of components are being affected. So, yes, they, it will, they indicated that the future projects will have to do with some type of electric vehicle.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Back in the day, the unfortunate accident we had at that plant out by the oasis, didn't they bake chips or something along those lines? Or have something to do with that type of industry, or no?
It was a different type, I think, of chip. Yes.
They made the crystals that were used to make the chips, but they were the base crystals.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So Pam, you and I have had extensive conversations. But I wanted to ask you, with the huge rise in the cost of lumber and construction alone, how much do you foresee that hindering actual building growth?
Well, a number of these companies, when they're looking at those costs, they've increased in the past year. And so they're looking at local areas, states, to provide incentives to offset some of those costs. That's not only in the real estate, it's in business as well. I mean, so it's, it is affecting that. However, if, to bring some of those products here, whether or not they come from abroad or from other states, and to expand those local, those areas, basically what they're having is their last mile. So rather than having one big location that serves multiple, their products, and having the cost deal with transportation, there, it may be cheaper for them to have multiple locations and have the costs be lower on their transportation costs. So it all depends.
Any other questions? If not, thank you Pam.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, number seven, approval of expenditures, general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $1,717,810.79. Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Snow? Second? Second by Alderman Porter? Any discussion, questions?
Actually, this would be under general. This is just for the chief Heiser. On page 38, I was just curious, there's a charge for government leasing for a vehicle, a lease payment on one of the fire trucks, $68,800. Are we leasing a fire truck? I didn't realize we were leasing one.
No, we're not leasing, Alderman. It's a six payment of seven is what we're doing. So it's not a lease. No, we're, we will own that vehicle. Yeah. So it says like number six of seven, so.
Alderman Stevens?
Oh, I got a question here for the police chief. On pages, looks like eight and nine. It says TJ's Converse Inc.
Yeah, it's TJ Canavera's. It's 160 boxes, SMB 45 auto ammunition. It's our practice ammunition that we use.
That makes sense. And then on the next page, 1,000 parking tickets? I thought we were going away from parking tickets.
Nope, not necessarily. The digit ticket system hasn't been set up for parking tickets currently, so we are still in need of them.
I did notice that our last mayor couldn't be bothered to come to the meetings, but he sure did go down to Springfield and spend a bunch of money. Does he still have a current credit card that's active?
No.
That's what I was hoping to hear.
Thank you, Alderman Stevens. Any other questions? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. This is under, this is also page 38, under the capital assets. And Tri-City emergency vehicles to install equipment, is that for the squad cars, or?
Yeah, we had two squads that had to be taken apart, had their equipment removed, squad 19 and 44. And then ultimately, that equipment had to be put back into the brand-new squads that were authorized roughly six months ago, and then we had just gotten.
Any others? All right, if not, we have a motion and a second on the floor for the general and special fund expenditures of $1,717,810.79. All those in favor will, when their name is called, answer aye. Those opposed, nay.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank. Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Thank you. Motion passed. And then under approval of expenditures, water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $393,938.10. Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second. Second by Alderman Snow? Any discussion, any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, and those opposed, nay, when their name is called.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Thank you. Number eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers. For the record, A through E is recorded and placed on file. Is the minutes of the committee of the whole building, planning, zoning, and public works dated May 10th of 2021? Is there a motion that those be approved?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Any corrections or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Frank.
Oh, do we need a roll call? We do, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, we don't.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
I thought I was wrong.
No. So used to it.
I'm so used to it, yes. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. Thank you. You were just checking testing me, weren't you? Okay. Number nine, unfinished business. We have a second reading for ordinance 524H, an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment, video gaming with the neighborhood business district located at 600 Logan Avenue. I think the city attorney has some unfinished business with that.
That's correct. Thinking remain on the table. I did contact the owner's attorney last week, and he was going to try and get ahold of Mr. Chuthar to see what's going on. I haven't heard back yet. So we can leave it on the table.
Okay. Item B, ordinance 534H, a second reading, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain personal property, police department vehicles, and approving the purchase of new vehicles. This pertains to the sale of one 2012 Dodge Durango and a 2014 Dodge Durango. Is that correct, Chief?
That is. That'd be squads 19 and 44 that we just previously discussed.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve ordinance 534H? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Flurry. Any discussion? Any other comment? If not, all those in favor will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, answer nay.
Frank. Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Thank you. I'm sorry, yes.
When we do these ordinance, since we are selling them, are we selling them to the dealership? And in the packet originally, there was dollar amounts. Does the dollar amount not need to be part of the ordinance at all?
No, it does not.
Chief?
Yeah, and we are selling them to Kuhnus, and that, those funds will go to Assistant Purchasing Squad 2, along with the insurance money.
Thank you. Item 9C, Resolution 2021-7, a resolution authorizing the execution of an easement agreement for the expansion of General Mills Park. And I think that at the time we had talked about this, there were some environmental concerns that would have left this on the table, but I believe they've been rectified. Is that correct?
That's correct. Mr. Mayor, it would be appropriate to remove this from the table this evening. I did receive the Phase 1 environmental report back for the subject property indicating that there's no obvious or known issues with respect to the property. They don't even recommend doing a Phase 2, so as far as we're concerned, we satisfied circula, and we're free to go forward with the transaction.
Okay, then do we have a motion and a second to take this off the table?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Porter? Any discussion? Okay, motion, there's a roll call on this as well, I believe, so.
I recommend that.
Those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay?
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Thank you. So then we need a motion to pass Resolution 2021-7, authorizing the execution of an easement agreement for the expansion of General Mills Park. Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderwoman Prather. Any discussion regarding this? Okay. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, and all those opposed, nay, when their name is read.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Thank you. Under new business, item A, ordinance number 536H is on for a first reading tonight. It's an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment, video gaming, within the planned business district located at 425 Beloit Road. This is just a first reading, so there isn't any comment normally. Item B, under new business, ordinance 537H is also a first reading, an ordinance amending Chapter 150, zoning ordinance of the municipal code, Section 150.105D, institutional district, Section 150.204C, institutional land uses. Table 15405C, permitted intrusions into required yards, and Appendix C, land use summary chart. Especially the amendments, that might be a misprint, especially the amendments are in regards to setbacks for institutional land uses, permitted institutional land uses, and accessibility ramps. Again, that's a first reading. We would have a motion to waive a two-week layover requirement of Section 2-87G of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code with respects, respect to ordinance 538H, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain personal property, specifically police canine dog Frank Sinatra. All right, motion by Alderman Snow. Do we have a second? Second by Alderman Flurry. So this is just to waive the two-week layover. Any questions regarding? If not, do we need a roll call on this, or just voice vote?
You do need a roll call because the ordinance requires seven aye votes to pass.
Correct. Okay. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay?
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Thank you. Then moving on to D, in accordance, ordinance 538H, an ordinance authorizing then, in fact, the sale of certain personnel property, police canine Frank Sinatra. Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderwoman Mahal, second by Alderwoman Franks. Any discussion on that? Any comment? Hearing none. All those, when their name is called, will signify, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay?
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Thank you. Moving along, item D, item E, excuse me, Resolution Number 2021-8. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the purchase of electricity from the lowest-cost electricity provider for the purposes of street lighting through the Northern Illinois Municipal Electric Collaborative Bid Process. Do we have a motion for authorization to that effect? Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderwoman Franks. Any comment, any questions, any discussion?
Alderman Stevens. Coming in and all that.
June 8th?
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in, well, this is a voice vote, correct? This isn't money, really.
I'd recommend a roll call on this one.
Okay. Roll call vote, those in favor will say aye, those opposed, nay.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Thank you. Moving on, we have motions of, out of Public Works. Chairman Freeman?
Thank you. A, motion to place two blind child signs on Warren Avenue and two blind child signs on East Pleasant Street.
Okay, we have motion out of committee. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, actually, we can do this with a voice vote, right? So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you.
B, motion to approve reducing the high-water usage bill at 1418 Ninth Avenue. The sewer portion of the water bill, $2,678.06, will be reduced by 75% to $669.51. That would leave a total bill of $2,381.03.
Okay, is there any other, is there any other discussion regarding that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay?
We doing roll call on this? Snow.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
I'll drop it.
That's okay.
Ten in favor?
Thank you.
C, motion to approve the proposal from PDC Laboratories in the amount of $2,700 for the PFAS sampling of well number three and well number four. This work will be paid for from Water Department line item number 61-5-810-6812.
Okay, we have a motion by Chairman Freeman. Is there any discussion, any questions regarding that motion? Hearing none, we'll move along. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay?
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
D, motion to approve the change order from Kahoye Pump Services in the amount of $18,701.26 for the well number four rehabilitation project. This work will be paid for from the water system depreciation account number 04-09.
Okay. Any questions regarding that motion or discussion? Hearing none. All those will, in agreement, will vote aye. Any opposed, nay?
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
E, motion to reject all bids with respect to the Southwest Tank Rehab Project.
We have a motion on the floor. Any discussion, questions? If not, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay?
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
F, motion to accept the loan amendment for the 2018 wastewater treatment plant improvement project. This amendment will reduce the principal loan amount to be repaid by $621,892.50.
Thank you, any questions regarding that motion, any comments? Or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will signify by saying aye, any opposed no?
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
G, motion to approve the low bid from Sega Egg Works in the amount of $300,000 to complete the VFW Forts Main Extension Project. This work will be paid for from the sewer depreciation fund number 06-08.
Any other discussion, any discussion regarding that motion? Or comments? Alderwoman Freeman?
So, you've checked into the reputation and they get an A-plus rating?
Um, I talked to the owner of the company and I'm confident that they should be able to get the work done as proposed in the contract documents, so I would recommend approval of this motion.
Alderman Snow?
So Brent, last time when they, the other Apollo was doing this, they, they had that big long pipe that they were gonna be snaking through once they made the hole. So, whatever happened to that pipe? Is that being reused or that was discarded and new pipe they're providing? Or what's the scoop there?
Correct, old pipe was discarded, new pipe is, is gonna be utilized.
I will say I will say that as time turned, uh, towards us, I guess it favored us because this bid is actually, if they, if they're able to complete this work, it's cheaper than the original bid, correct Brent, by what, $28,000?
Uh, in the $20,000 dollar range, correct, it was a little bit cheaper, so hopefully everything goes according to the plan.
Okay. So, all those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye, any opposed no?
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
H, motion to approve the sale of the 1974 Penko Trailer to Cordray Brothers Inc. in the amount of $1,850.
Okay, is there any questions on that motion? Chairman Freeman?
So, this isn't the one that we like traded for gravel?
No, no, this is, this is, well, the sludge trailer from the wastewater treatment plant that the frame broke and we replaced it with two new trailers.
Anybody else? Hearing none, uh, motion to approve the sale of the Penko Trailer to Cordray Brothers in the amount of $1,850. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, opposed nay?
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
A, motion to approve the replacement of the traffic signals at the intersection of Logan Avenue and East Avenue be added to the Logan Avenue Rehabilitation Project at an estimated cost of $200,000. This work will be paid from MFT and capital funds.
Okay, is there any questions regarding that motion from anybody? Any comments? If not, all those in favor will, all those in favor will signify by saying aye, all those opposed nay?
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
J, motion to approve reviewing the natural bottom option for the Sixth Street Low Flow Channel with the property owner.
Okay, we have a motion. Motion, um, do we have any discussion regarding that? Alderman Porter?
Uh, just one question. Does the same property owner own this whole property all the way down from Sixth Street?
Yes, he owns, uh, one side all the way down, correct, and both sides for most of the majority of it. So yes, it's primarily one property owner.
Have we had any discussion with them yet on this?
Not as of yet.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. All those opposed no, aye, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed?
K, motion to authorize the Public Works Director to obtain an updated appraisal for the 717 West Locust Street and to obtain an appraisal for the needed property and easements located at 801 Fifth Avenue.
Okay, we have a motion, um, on the floor, is there any discussion regarding this motion? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, do we know how much these appraisals are gonna cost?
City Attorney, what's your guess?
Seems like every single one I've ordered lately is $1,900.
I was gonna say, going rate, and there's two of them, so it could be perhaps double that, although I doubt it, because the ones probably, it's just gonna be an update, so it's probably I would say probably two to 4,000.
Can we cause this residential, this commercial property?
Both.
The commercial tends to run more for whatever reason, but...
Thank you, that's all.
Alderman Porter?
Thank you, I guess I would ask Brent if, uh, is this really necessary to purchase this property? Or can we get the easement without actually purchasing the property? And also, since there is some relation to CES and all the business that we give them over the years, you think they'll give us any type of, a little bit of a break on the property?
Uh, two questions, two parcels. On the CES property, uh, the, the sale of, um, Kevin Bungy's father's property, the residential adjacent to the river, he has agreed to sell that to us at the appraised value. Um, and that sale will also include the easement across the CES property to allow the storm drain to go across that property. So we're not paying anything for the easement across this property. As far as Franklin Wire, they've indicated that they are willing to provide the city with the easement and the necessary property for the detention area, but they would like to be compensated again at the appraised value. So that's why we need those appraisals to be done.
Continue.
Okay, I guess I would like to, to ask though, if, do we actually need to purchase this property that has the house on it? Or can we get an easement without actually purchasing the whole, whole lot and everything?
Uh, due to the fact that the, the property itself is a small lot, it's like 50 by 74, um, so it's a rather small piece of property. And the amount of excavation and the depth that we'll be putting the pipe in there to make that storm drain to the river, it really leaves the property not much value once you get done with the easement. So, um, for that reason, I would recommend purchasing the entire parcel. Yes, as good as the, the house and everything, we'll, we'll clear the property.
Thank you, anybody else? Hearing, pardon, oh, I'm sorry.
So then, what's the plan for that, um, little parcel of land once we get the, the pipe all done and then we just have a little chunk of land there? What are we gonna do, just mow it?
We will, we will mow it and maintain it, yes. Um, foreseeable future, or maybe distant future. If, uh, park improvements or other things come up, we could certainly contemplate uh, those kind of uses, but as, whereas that by itself, it'll just be, uh, owned by Public Works, owned by the city and it'll be maintained and mowed by the city.
And I think it's important to keep in mind that, um, without this piece of the puzzle, then we really don't, uh, we're really not able to address any of the, any of our, uh, long-range plans for flooding, uh, in, really in the, in the whole area that we've mapped out, so...
Correct, this is, remember, this is, this is an alternate plan, this is Plan B, if you will. Um, because the original Plan A was to have a detention facility on the Washington School property and it's not, it turned out to be not practical based on the improvements that were done there. So this is a alternate to that.
All right, uh, so we have a motion out of, out of committee. All, um, all those in favor will signify by saying aye, and any opposed nay?
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Finally, L, motion to authorize the mayor to sign the renewal of the 10-year traffic control maintenance agreement with IDOT.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there any other discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, is that a roll call vote, or? Okay, all those in favor will signify by saying aye, any opposed nay?
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Thank you, thank you, Chairman Freeman. Moving on, motion, uh, motions of the building, planning, zoning, Chairman Porter?
Okay, motion to authorize a one-year special use extension for 1930-160 Chrysler Drive Personal Storage Facility.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, on the floor, is there any other debate, questions? Hearing none? All those in favor will signify by saying aye, all those opposed nay?
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Okay, motion to authorize waiving the building fees for Habitat for Humanity project at 407 West Madison Street.
Okay, we have a motion, is there any discussion regarding that motion? Hearing none, uh, those in favor will signify by saying aye, those opposed nay?
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Thank you, item, item O?
Uh, motion to authorize waiving the zoning fees uh, for Habitat for Humanity project at 407 West Madison Street, this...
We have a motion on the floor, is there any discussion regarding that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor will signify by saying aye, opposed nay when the clerk calls a roll?
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Thank you, uh, next is motion of financing personnel, Chairman Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. Item P, motion to have the city attorney draft a letter to the Boone County Board to consider splitting any additional expenses for the COSAP enforcement officer that are not covered by the grant.
Okay, we have a motion out of committee, any discussion regarding that motion? If not, all those in favor please signify by saying aye?
Oh, aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, may? Thank you.
Q, motion to approve a financial services agreement for temporary assistance with Becky Tobin.
Okay, um, I did, I did wanna comment, uh, just briefly on this. So, we have been without, uh, our finance budget director and we also have an audit going on and we're also gonna have somebody, hopefully that we hire very soon. I'm optimistic, hope everybody else is. Um, so, we thought this would be a lot, uh, a lot better uh, regarding financial investment, uh, to do that. This way, I think Becky still has a vested interest in this community. I believe that this will be a lot less inexpensive and will save the taxpayers as we make a transition. I believe that this will be a lot less inexpensive and will save the taxpayers as we make a transition. So, that's what's behind it. Any other questions? Hearing none, um, all those in favor will signify by saying aye, all those opposed, nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Frather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Brings us to R, motion to approve PSEBA benefits to Officer Brandon Parker.
Okay, we have a motion presented on the floor, is there any discussion regarding that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor will signify by saying aye, all those opposed, nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Frather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Item S, motion to authorize surgery and rehabilitation for K-9 Shep in accordance with the medical plan not to exceed four thousand four hundred dollars paid for by the proceeds from the sale of K-9 Frankie.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, any discussion or debate regarding that motion? Alder, Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, we had originally, um, back when this first came up, talked about, um, selling Frankie to, um, Officer Parker for a dollar, um, because he had donated a dog, and, um, Frankie really couldn't be used with anyone else. So, um, by upping the price, um, to Officer Parker, to cover the medical expenses, um, for Shep, we're, we're basically, um, breaking even, and Officer Parker was okay with that?
Yeah, this was, uh, conversation that, uh, the department had with Officer Parker, and, uh, he was absolutely in agreement with it. Uh, K-9 Frankie is only three years old, um, you know, we ran into logistical issues trying to use him within the department, but Officer Parker potentially with, uh, his, uh, secondary employment, potentially could have, uh, some value with Frankie.
Anybody else? Alright, hearing none, uh, all those in favor of the motion is presented, uh, will signify by saying aye, all those opposed, nay.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Frather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Porter?
Could I go back, uh, to, uh, R here just for a second and ask a question?
Uh, it's, it's passed. If you wanna be heard, go ahead, but I'm not sure that, okay, I'm not sure it's appropriate. Okay, Chairman Burden?
Item T, motion to approve the release agreement and settlement with Frankenmuth Mutual Insurance Company.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor regarding that, and, uh, that's obviously the Apollo, um, debacle. So, is there any other discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor will signify by saying aye, all those opposed, nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Frather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Alderman, Alderman Snow?
And I was, ask if, uh, the text amendment that's gonna come up, um, two weeks from now for ordinance revision, is that something that we would potentially want to put on a committee to discuss beforehand? Like, there might be stuff that might hiccup things that we wanna iron out before we get to the final vote? I'm, I'm looking at Mr. Drella as well, 'cause he attends those meetings and...
And I'm looking down, ducking your gaze. Um, it's pretty much, just cleaning up the code, there was one issue on one of the text amendments that drew the attention of two of the commissioners who actually voted against the amendment.